Okay, the next item on the agenda is the report from our senior representative. Take it away Danielle.
Alright, so my first point is the 2017-18 yearbook that's finally done and out for the public.
I love the cover.
It's, yeah, this cover, just because everyone really likes it a lot. It was custom chosen by the yearbook committee. Like, that's actually like a very custom cover, like no one else can get that. Like, we designed that ourselves. It's not, you know, it's a pretty rare opportunity that we actually get to do something like that, so it is a little more costly, but it came out very, very nice. And I personally love how you can see like all those pictures through. It's just really meaningful and really great. But anyway, so after a lot of anticipation, on Thursday, June 7th, we finally got to dedicate the yearbook. I was actually like the person who kind of led that as I was like the only senior in yearbook committee this year. But the dedication ceremony went great. We dedicated the book to Mr. Field and Mr. Harret this year because they are our senior class advisors and are just people who have been in the school for a very, very long time and have... I mean that every way.
Wait, can you say that again, it's like right now?
Just people who have been, you know, very helpful to the school district and done just a lot of great things. It was, Ben and Sam Field obviously got to dedicate the book to their father, which was a very meaningful moment. And Brady Sickler, who was a bowler and also a tech club student, got to dedicate the page to Mr. Harret. And of course, we got Mr. Field to cry, which is always a plus. Not a hard...
But not too difficult though.
Yeah, I was gonna say, not a hard thing to do, but a fun thing to do. And just the whole yearbook itself came out very great. It's one of the best ones yet, in my opinion. I mean, I'm a little biased because I helped create the majority of this. But there was, I mean, it was a very small yearbook committee this year. There were only, I think, six of us in total, maybe. And everyone who was a part of yearbook this year, we usually always have that one person who just doesn't do anything and stays for the pizza party at the end. But this year, everybody put in so much effort. Everybody found like that one thing they really wanted to help with in the book, whether that was sports pages. In my case, I did like all the senior pages, clubs, like anything they found what they really wanted to do, and it couldn't have gone any better. And honestly, this yearbook is my favorite. So, my next point is the senior class walkthrough. So actually, right after the dedication of this yearbook, the seniors all left the auditorium and went to put on the captain gowns, which is like the weirdest feeling ever of just like not being graduated yet and going and putting on your captain gown way before graduation. But it was so meaningful to get to walk through the auditorium and have like all of your fellow classmates cheering for you. And then we got to walk outside, which is very warm, but we got to go into the elementary and middle schools. It was not only meaningful to get to see like our teachers and stuff, but also the young students, to get to show them like what they will get to be someday. And also, like a lot of people got to see like their siblings. Or I know for me, I got to see all my dance students because I'm a dance, or was a dance teacher. I actually graduated from Kappa past weekend, so not a dance teacher anymore, but hopefully in the future, maybe again. But it was so meaningful to get to like, you know, show these younger kids, like, you know, these are your mentors possibly, and they're doing this, and you can do exactly the same thing. And of course, seeing our teachers, like I said, our old teachers, was a really great moment. People, a lot of them, we haven't seen in years, and we got to see them, you know, that one last time. And then finally, the senior trip, which was on Monday. We had to wake up at, or not wake up at 5:00 a.m. because of the school at 5:00 a.m., so waking up more like 4:00 a.m. in order to eat breakfast and get our senior t-shirts, which I'm wearing, which they came out very, very nice. Then the bus left the school at 5:30 to head off to Darien Lake, and we couldn't have asked for more perfect weather. It wasn't too hot, wasn't too cold, just a really ideal day to be in an amusement park. Darien Lake is a brand new roller coaster. Everybody loved riding that. It was interesting to see like who, like you got to hang out with on the senior trip because it's not necessarily the people you would, like your closest friends or whatever. It was everybody, you know? You would just like get in line for a roller coaster and be like, oh, here's people I've barely talked to, but let's, you know, connect now, like for the last chance we have. And it was just an amazing day. And I'm trying to think of what else. I've lost my train of thought completely there for a second. We had a picnic lunch in the afternoon, which was, it was nice to get to sit with everybody. Then had another, you know, long amount of time to go on rides and such. And then after that, we ate dinner at Golden Corral in Rochester and then headed home. I forget when we even got home, it was late. But it was a very long day, but a very, very fun day. So yeah, that's it.
Any questions or comments?
Was everybody asleep on the bus by the time you came home?
No, I wanted to sleep, but no one else did. There were just like flashlights in my face and people blaring music and, but it was a fun time. I'm glad I stayed awake.
What was the participation on the senior trip?
I'd say almost all, except maybe a couple people, but I swear I saw everybody that I've ever been in the school with, obviously senior wise, people I haven't seen in like years, like who have gone to like Bo C's or P Tech, like a lot of people.
Yeah, we had graduates from all different programs come. We did have a few who said they were coming and then maybe changed their mind if I had them. For the poor...
Anyone else? I have a comment. My comment is, on behalf of the board, I'd like to really thank you for serving as a student representative this year. I think that, you know, you've been very conscientious and creative and enthusiastic, and we really appreciated the information and all your type of participation. I think it's really helped us to have a better feel for what's going on in the school. And so we very much appreciate that you were willing to serve and we wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you. It's really been an honor to have this opportunity, and I hope it's something that can continue for the rest of Kandig Harry High School, you know, forever, because it's, I think, a really important thing. And I'm really happy it's a thing that started and, like I said, hope it continues.
Along those lines, I'll also use this opportunity to announce that we have a student representative for next year, which was approved by the, at the same time as the budget vote, and it will be Olivia Stanley, who was elected to serve and forward to her being, you know, as the representative next year. And while we're on farewells, a bunch of years ago, we were looking for somebody to be on the school board, and I talked to Rachel and convinced her. I don't know if she's ever forgiven me for this, but she agreed to run, and I really appreciate that she did, and I appreciate the service that you've given over these years. And you've been very selfless and never complained, and I think that your contribution has been very valuable and helpful. And so I'm really happy that you agreed to serve. I'm very unhappy that you're unserving. But thank you very much. And on behalf of the board, I really think you've been a valuable member and added a big contribution, so thank you. Why am I starting crying? No, no, look out, Mr. Field, here I come. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the, I can't read that.
Policy.
Policy committee report.
Yeah, if you want, I can read this one. We'll start off with the, does everyone else have a copy or no, just the policy committee?
No, not all of them.
Okay, that's all right. I just wanted to know when I'm talking. So the first one is the Policy 7542, Dignity for All Students Act updates. We have one that we wanted to include, or actually, there was a word sex that was included in the proposal. We talked about removing that because if you look on the back of that policy, there are several other policies that refers to, and one of those is sexual harassment of adults, 6121. There's also sexual harassment of students, which is 7541. So it was a bit redundant, and the other policies that we have are much more comprehensive. So of course, we will refer to or keep the referrals of these policies in that Dignity for All Students Act. And the Dignity Act coordinator, we just, we didn't really change much. We just switched around some sentences just to make sure it made more sense and flowed smoother. We also wanted to include our vision, mission, and value statement to make sure that we tied in any updates with, you know, our vision, mission, and values. The other thing that we wanted to include with this was if there were any kind of, like I'm looking on the second page, it says the district will timely collect information related to incidents involving harassment, and we wanted the board to make sure, we wanted to make sure the board was informed throughout the investigative process. So we wanted to include some language with that, just so we would be updated. We also have prohibited and retaliatory behavior whistleblower protection. We wanted to use the same language, I believe, for our whistleblower protection policy. Is that correct? And I guess that was really about it. We wanted to, I had mentioned, we wanted to add the Sexual Harassment of Adults 6121 and make sure we updated the 7541 policy for sexual harassment of students. But the other policies that were included for this policy, because, you know, a lot of the policies we have are redundant, but we had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 11, you know, referrals to other policies. So it's actually pretty comprehensive. Does that make sense? All right. Scott, is there anything we wanted to add to that? I mean, it looked pretty good. We just had some minor things.
All right.
The next one we had update was 3310, and this was the Public Access to Records. And we didn't have many changes other than we may want to include cost for foiling. There's a sentence in there that says the district shall provide copies of records in the format and medium requested by the person following the Freedom of Information Law of FOIL. And so there's also a sentence in there that says, you know, requested the district can reasonably do so regardless of burden, volume, or cost of request. And I think Patty, we did say that we do charge if it's paper copies. So I mean, we already have a provision in there. We just thought it might be a good idea to include that in a policy that it may include a cost, you know, just to cover that. That way, if somebody says it doesn't say that in your policy, and yet they're getting charged 25 cents per copy, we just, you know, thought that would be a good safeguard. Any questions on that? Scott, any updates or Debbie? The next policy we had was 7222, Diploma or Credential Options for Students with Disabilities. We read through it, and we didn't have any suggestions. Basically, this is just to make sure that students can graduate with, you know, is this the CDOs, right? And so I'm just trying to think of any, any highlights. But really, in my opinion, this is really is going to help kids graduate or receive some type of credential, and it'll help the students who have IP's and 504s. But we didn't, we didn't think there was any changes necessary to it. I bet it looked pretty good and comprehensive.
The one option, or the one piece of this that's important is based on a law that states that school districts will allow students with disabilities to participate in graduation ceremonies. That is a state law. We found that a little interesting because our students all do. Apparently, other places, maybe not.
Really?
Yes, so there is a law, is it Matthew's law? Zachary's law?
Yeah.
That was passed. So that's part of this policy, along with diploma options.
I do have a small comment on that policy, which is at the bottom of page one of the policy, number three.
Yes.
It says, apparently refers to people who have entered ninth grade before 2011.
That is, yes. The RCT continues to linger, and that is even part of, and I think you should put that in the cap because it still comes up.
And the RCTs are still listed as examples you can request and take in New York State? I can't do the math on it?
I know.
Because it seems to me like everybody would have h-ed out, but they're still there.
It is still even offered, so...
I just, I'm 2011, that's history. I can't hold it.
Well, they probably still have the RCTs, right?
I would imagine at some point that will be retired.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. It has to be.
Okay. I was just, you know, just struck.
Does anyone have questions regarding the diploma or CDOs or that?
I can actually remind, you'll see on that letter.
Wait, wait, just raise your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 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 Mark. Mr. Gordy, I do have the certification that goes along with my degree in secondary business education as a CEIP Cohop Coordinator. So I have the ability, I have certification to do any of this, of the job shadowing or anything like that that needs to be done, internships, that kind of thing. That went along with my sort of, with my degree when I received that. So I wanted to offer that to you.
There's a voluntary rule today.
Well, I gotta do what I gotta do, right?
Do you have a part in that if I ask a clarifying question? Do you have your work-based learning certificate that is part of it?
Yes, it is.
That's nice, yeah, that's a good thing to have.
I have, I have all my certifications in my fire shake box at home, so yeah.
I actually have a lot of the questions.
I don't want anything to happen to that. Really, I need to.
Does this, does this policy reflect the current SED requirements in terms of different types of diplomas?
Yes, the entire manual, yes.
I know, because it's been evolving, and I just wanted to make sure.
That's why it was updated.
The 2017 one, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
The next policy we reviewed was the visitor to school, or visitors to school. That was 3210. The current one, 2016, we wanted to retire that one. The new one we want to include is a 2018 update. I think the big change between the old one and the new one, even though there are only two years difference, is we're adding the Electronic Visitor Management System. So that means when people come in, they have to go through this system, and it has a current database of, you know, offenders or people who should not be in the schools, right? And I think it's real-time information that the district receives or the, and so at that point, any visitor that comes to the school would need to sign in. Does that make sense? And so we would know who potentially the bad actors are. And we didn't have any changes to this one, other than, you know, the update, but I think the electronic visitor management system was a good addition to have.
That goes in line with the implementation of our Raptor systems in all, at all those schools.
And then, any questions on that? All right. So the other thing too, the people will get a visitor's badge, it'll print up, so anyone who walks around the school should have. And I'm assuming that'll be just kind of a single thing that just goes on. The next thing we were talking about, it says on here 3510, but I think it's, is it supposed to be 3150, school volunteers? I just have a question.
Oh yeah, that's me with a typo. Yes, 3150.
Okay, yeah, I kind of figured that.
I just typed it wrong.
So this one is actually, we're talking about school volunteers. We talked extensively about this, but I think we, it looks pretty good. But some of the things we wanted to include on this is the school volunteers, I think we needed to, we wanted it to conform to our district confidentiality policy. We want to make sure that any school volunteers are not going to undermine the principal or undermine the district or undermine the teacher. They need to follow, again, any kind of federal or state laws. They must attend any type of training before they can participate to kind of outline what their expectations are, what they should be doing, what they should not be doing. And these people need to be willing and committed. We don't want somebody who's just going to come in and be an inspector and come in for a day and, you know, take notes and then, you know, post everything on Facebook. So we would like to think that we would get them on a schedule. For example, if we needed somebody to read, you know, maybe a grandparent would come in and want to read, but they would be committed to reading maybe once a month, maybe for 10 months, or however, you know, Stacy or the principals or the teachers would read, but they would need to have some type of schedule. That's why, what we mean by willing and committed. We don't want somebody who's just going to come in for a day and then leave. Plus too, that is not very good use of our time if we're going to train them as well. So I guess the training, we never really talked specifically, it's not really in here.
We have a little more work to do in this year.
It'll be the regulation.
And we also talked a little bit, again, we talked about the difference between visitors and volunteers. The volunteers would be a regular basis. The visitors would be somebody who would be in for the day, or, you know, for a one-time visit, or maybe, you know, I don't know, a grandparent's breakfast, if something like that, and then maybe at the end of the year, there's an assembly, you know what I mean? So there is a distinct difference between a volunteer and a visitor. And so that's one of the things that we discussed. We also talked about, you know, there's got to be an application that's filled out. The principal needs to review it and report and forward his or her decision about the selection process, you know, do I, is this person going to be a good candidate? And then it would be forwarded on to the district office for evaluation. But again, having volunteers, we want volunteers, but we want, we want to make sure the volunteers are going to do good things and not there to, you know, be supversive. Does that make sense?
Define supversive.
Also, this is an important policy since volunteers are part of the district operational safety plan, so now there would be board policy when we get the next iteration, we have some, we're adding to the policy quite a bit, so that that would be in place as well for the fall.
We also had us like a sample application. I don't know if this would really need to be updated, it depends, but right now it looked pretty good from what we looked at. But, you know, there, it is a formalized application as well that goes with the policy.
And our attorneys have already looked at that, so it's really the policy piece that we're, this stuff that we talked about, we need to get added.
Okay, of these, are there any ones that need to be approved?
Just the one that's on the agenda for me.
Yeah.
So that would be the one that we had on the ground.
The CDOs one, yeah. That's the 7222.
Thank you.
The others have a few final revisions to make, I mean, that come for a little, but since we've covered them, it's really just textual things that we wanted to reword.
Okay, next, another last minute addition to the agenda, I apologize, is the Finance Committee report. This won't take long, this is based on one item that we need to raise, and do you want to take it with you, Scott?
Sure. So there was actually two items, but it won't take very long. The first one was we wanted to move forward and investigate options for our investment of funds because our preliminary data shows us that we could have better rates of return. So we're going to be investigating that unless the board objects.
And I'd like to say that, you know, it's a significant difference. We're talking, instead of period 00001, it's period 01. That's going to mean a significant improvement in our return on money there. I mean, it could help our budget and help, it could be another teacher, I mean, it's amazing.
Minimally from a few thousand dollars to tens of thousands of dollars. So it's worth us spending the time to try to do this investigation.
And then I won't have to do all that math every time and have to fit it.
Just from our preliminary data, it's pretty simple. So if there's not an objection, then we're going to forward that investigation.
I think it's a good idea, yeah.
The second item, the second item was the...
Can I just interrupt for a second? If you go down to approvals, there's an attachment about the second item, so you can see what he's proposing.
The pool wages. We, there was a proposal made to us to reconsider pool wages for all the employees that participated in our various pool programs. We reviewed the proposal. We also tried to figure out how our rates were set to non-school users. So if there's an organization, just pick an example, like the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts wants to use the pool for some event, then there's a set fee for that. We couldn't figure out how it was set, so we basically calculated, and we determined that it averaged out to be about 30% over our cost. So we looked at the rates, the wage rates, some of them hadn't been changed in a long time, 2011, I think we determined. And then we rationalized what we thought were reasonable rates based on the jobs. And what we propose to you is that our fees would maintain 30% over our cost on an ongoing basis, whatever our cost is.
For outside groups.
For outside groups only, correct. And then the wages that we recommended, we felt, we took the advice of the recommendation except for what would be typically our high school students doing lifeguard or student instructors, and we took about a 50% of that increase that was recommended, which brings those rates to 1250 and 1475 respectively, and we thought that was a fair salary, so we're going to maintain that. The other rates, we did a 50% increase for to the certified phys ed, I'm sorry, no, the supervisor, and that was it, just the supervisor. We did 50% now and 50% next year, to get to the rates that were recommended to us. Okay? The budget increase, we calculated to be about $9,000, and the increase for next year will add about another thousand, so it's, and the 9,000 for this year is already in the budget. It's already calculated. So, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand this. I'm looking at pool wages that are recommended. So if you go down to the, you know, the first page, it says two hours, two guards, and supervisor. If you look at 2018, 2019, so the outside organization would pay that $111 for two hours. All right, that, yeah, that spells out very, I mean, it spelled out very nicely, and he's able to spell it out, yeah.
And previously, this kind of hodgepodge.
Yeah, it's a little noisy, yeah. Trying to figure out.
So this looks good, I mean, it's very set, it makes sense.
No, it's down here. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you for this.
Right along, we have, and the last one. The capital project update.
Okay, so despite our best efforts to put everything into State Ed for the proposed Phase 1A, which was the track, that project was not improved by SED by the, in time for our May 30th final deadline. We knew it was a long shot to begin with, but we thought it was worth the effort to try and see if we could get that project started a year ahead of time. We will not be able to do that, so it'll just be completed next year with everything else. But we did want to give it an effort. There were some, we answered the questions that State Ed had in a very timely fashion. They did not return responses to us by our May 30th deadline, so we can move forward. Just as an aside, there are two companies in New York State, they have bided up the state east and west, my understanding is, who do track resurfacing in some of the work. May 30th was pushing it because their schedule fills, so we'll be moving forward with thinking about that next year. And in the 1B process, which now is 1A and 1B together, our bidding in March and April should allow us to make sure we are captured in one of those two companies. So that's unfortunate, and we were a little sad about that, but we knew it was a long shot to think about getting the track finished this year.
Can't we go to bid before the next one, though?
If we get approval from State Ed.
Yeah, that's what I mean. State Ed comes back, say, July 13. State Ed comes back, say, July.
In July, yes, then we could go to bid then.
That way we're locked in.
We're locked in with someone.
Yeah.
Yes. We just don't know at this point in time when we might hear something from State Ed. Our proposed Phase 1B, which is the secure vestibules and the other maintenance work that require the project, it's in the final stages of completion at SEI for SED submission that will occur by the end of the month, end of June. And then our current schedule, and I always have to say this, and you'll hear me say this, you'll hear Gary say this, you'll hear Eric say it, everything's pending SED submission and approval. So we will submit the end of June, and then it goes to SED, and there it stays for a while, until they approve it, they review it, and approve it. We are projecting right now that the project will be approved around February 2019, with bidding then in March and April, and construction starting in next June.
Do we have a final proposal of what this looks like?
Not yet. Not yet. That will be, that's what we will, well, we have the schematics, I mean, Eric has shared with you before what the vestibules look like.
So they haven't changed anything?
No, no, those were what was accepted. But we will give you a final scope of project as soon as they finish their work. But nothing, nothing in that changed from what Eric presented a while ago, whenever he presented it.
I'd just like to indicate, from my recollection, he said that it still could be changed down the road if we see something that we are not happy with, that, you know, this was just what was submitted, doesn't mean it's, you know, chisel and stone.
Right, there's still the opportunity.
We still have the opportunity to reevaluate the changes.
I think it's kind of important to at least see the final before we break ground.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes.
This is exactly what we're planning to do.
Oh, exactly, you will, you will, the board will, absolutely. So again, they're in the final stages of doing that, so they're getting that together. They're coming on Monday?
Yes.
Monday. Hopefully they'll be bringing us the final to look at. Again, it's only the vestibules, the rest of the work is, you will have all the rest of the mechanical work and everything else that's going into with the water, the hot water, condensing hot water boilers, I'm going to try and sound like Eric, as well as some of the other controls and the things that are being changed there. So the last piece is the energy performance contract. We received the final contract from Johnson Controls on Monday. It was immediately sent out to our school attorneys for review before it comes to the board for consideration. That's our standard practice with contracts. So the next steps are board approval of the contract, and then submission to SED for approval. The EPC, which are the lights and some of the other safety measures that we talked about, is scheduled to be executed again in the summer of 2019. So next summer is going to be really busy, around the desert. Any questions about the capital project? We'll make sure we get to the final specs, which we'll get anyway.
When does that come back to the board, I guess is my question? Because clearly if something's getting submitted in June, it's not happening there, so...
Right, we could have it bring it back in July. But there's nothing any different than what you've already seen and discussed, and there's nothing, there's no changes to that.
I think obviously, we definitely want to see it before March or April when the bidding happens.
Oh, no, we can bring, well, yeah, that's why I said we'll bring it back in July.
All right, the next point on the agenda is the budget survey results, which is therefore our proposal. Rather than go through it since everybody had the opportunity to look at it, are there any questions or comments about the survey? One thing that was, to me, was very obvious was 25% of respondents were going to keep the safety officer going, so, but that's something that's not already taken into consideration. Have a discussion about that later. Anything else anyone wants to comment on?
Okay.
No, I was pointing to you.
The fact that people are getting information from the district newsletter.
And that's their preferred.
To me, that I think we should keep, yeah, the number that they prefer. We should keep doing that. And I was surprised by the number, well, not maybe nearly surprised, but I'm trying to find it.
Can I say something?
How they identify themselves?
I think that was it. Can I follow on what we just talked about?
While I find it.
I think it's really important, based on that, that we try to get that out earlier. Because I did read through the comments, and I know somebody else had the same experience I did.
The budget newsletter?
Yeah. I get it the day of the election.
We have, we mail it the day after, there's a deadline, we're told when to mail it. It has to be mailed after the budget hearing, and that's when it is, it's in print and it's sent.
Well, it barely makes it to the House.
So perhaps...
It's almost a waste.
So perhaps the board might consider thinking when the budget hearing is.
Correct. That's what I'm saying, is the letter needs to get to people thousands of times.
But I think there's, but other places do it a little bit earlier than we do, so there might be a few days.
Might, yeah, okay.
So my suggestion would be that we review that budget development calendar that comes out from State Ed planning and our school attorneys next November, to see where there might be some flexibility of time.
Because I thought I was the only one, but I read through the comments. Other people said the same thing, so...
But there was a problem with Springer's post-ops, there always, there seems to be, I don't know what they do with their mail.
I'm sorry, Rachel, it was connected to your comments, so...
No, it's fine, I had to find it, I had to find it. It was questioning with how they identified themselves, and we're up to 51% for responding, saying that they did not have any children asked for, they're still coming, they're old, yep, on the budget, so, yep.
Yes. I noted this, I noted the same.
But considering that, it's very encouraging that all the people showing the most of Deb as well also voted yes.
To support.
Yes, so which is encouraging that they're seeing it as something important for the community, even if not for their family directly.
Right.
That's encouraging. And apparently, the full turnout is not something that was just a thing that we experienced all over the state, there was a very low turnout in most school districts, so, you know, I'm not sure what it signifies, but it's just a fact. Any other questions, comments? Okay. The organizational meeting date, it has to be no later than July 15th. We have a board meeting on the 12th, so we should get our calendars out and pick a date to have that, the organizational one.
Well, it's supposed to be the same day. Yes, it's supposed to be the 12th, is that the title?
I was going to say, why are we putting on a Friday night?
No, it's Friday. Yes.
So, wouldn't we, should that be earlier than the board meeting? Like at 6:30?
Yes.
Okay. So, is everybody able to be here at 6:30 on the 12th of July, prior to the board meeting? Not yet.
Yeah, it's the 12th, it's 6:30.
Okay. All right, so that's, we'll have our organizational meeting.
Yes, I need, I need to a vote on that, please.
Do I have a motion to have it at 6:30 or 12?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I figured you would. But, but you don't stay. Okay, our next point on the agenda is board meeting dates. There's a draft that was included with the agenda. Are there any problems or questions or concerns about any of the dates? Obviously, we can always change them, as much as saying, as we get closer, but is there anything at this point that raises any flags or...
The one during spring break. Is that intended to be a meeting?
If you choose, it would be an informational meeting, or you, that's up to you.
Because it's on the list, but then it said during spring break, and it didn't list all the business or information.
Well, it would be an informational, if you choose to hold it. But you can, you don't have to.
Why don't, why don't we just leave it on for now, and then we can, or we decided to not have a meeting, or have it up before or after the spring break, let's see what things are looking like at that point. Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Anything else, any other concerns or observations? Need a motion on this call? Could I have a motion to accept the tentative schedule as the schedule?
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? What a wet blanket you are. Okay, so now we have approvals, there's two sections, there's approvals and then consent approvals, so it looks to be approvals one at a time, and then consent approvals together. So the first one is the district operational safety plan.
It's just, we reviewed it the last time and brought it back. The volunteer piece is captured by the board policy that we're working on, the volunteer form, as Chris mentioned and Scott mentioned, we have one, it was verified by our attorney. So at this point, it's just really the board adoption of the operational safety.
Are there any comments or questions? First, I, first, I have a, I'd like a motion.
A motion to adopt it, or?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
And a second?
So the changes were the highlighted areas? Okay. What, what is restorative justice circles? I did not Google it to find out.
You did not?
I did not.
Okay, so a couple of years ago, then Mark and Chime and, Mark and I went to an NISP conference about different, about different ways to deal with students behaving, students who are challenged in the schools. And one model is restorative justice, which is a way of looking at student behavior as a, as something that happens, and then how do you make amends, and how do you help make it right, and how do you help learn that skill so you can move forward? So it's not necessarily consequence free, but it is about making things right and trying to correct things, and then I'll let Mark take it over from there.
Okay, actually, this was introduced by Larry Spring, superintendent of Connected Schools.
I remember you talking about it, I didn't remember the thing.
And they use restore in the high school.
In the high, it's a high school.
And it's a way of high school kids to get together and discuss issues between themselves, and try to, you know, work, resolve issues rather than let them fester and become, you know, big issues in the school. And apparently, it's been very successful in reducing tensions and conflicts within the high school. And so it's something that I think is worth exploring and seeing if we'll be able to be able to let it know.
So the intention is, from reading this then, that basically the conscious discipline expands up and restorative justice circles take high school on. So how connected are the two principles and theories behind conscious discipline and restorative justice?
I think it's very similar in the sense that kids are asked to understand what caused issues, and to confront each other, you know, the recipient of problems and the causer of problems, and to try and talk it out and figure out ways to make amends for it and to make it right. And so it's very similar to what goes on in conscious...
So foundational principles are similar for this.
Yes, and so one way to look at that, look at this is as in K8, as we're thinking about building those social emotional skills, like a lot of foundation skills in academic areas in K8, in 912, those skills can be applied within the structure of restorative justice. One model is restorative justice circles, so that students then use those skills to help resolve problems that they are facing.
I just want to make sure that we have continually dream work.
It's a continuum, yeah. It's like, kind of like, it things grow with, it grows with the students.
Any other discussion?
I have one other, I don't know why I didn't see this before, but I have just a suggestion on how to change the next to last paragraph in the first, the next to last sentence in the first paragraph, and I'll just give it to you.
Okay, just give it to me, thank you.
Okay, I have two things, who else? One is on page six, on your secure entrances. I think it should say, all visitors enter East Hill Middle School Complex with a front entry at East Hill, which is unlocked at 3:00 PM, rather than locked at 3:00 PM.
Right, that, well, no, that was...
Okay, so, just make that, the other thing that, in the section about, you know, the safety committee and the threat, the threat assessment.
Threat assessment committee, yeah.
There's no mention at all of the mentoring program, which I think really is a part of, I mean, it's beyond safety, but it's certainly part of the safety issue as well, and I think it should be mentioned at some point.
Which section are you in, Mark?
The one that talks about the safety committee and then the threat assessment.
You know where I would put it, Mark? I'd suggest we put it under the school culture piece.
Because it was listed under school culture.
It's in school culture.
Oh, it is, I didn't see that.
And their action steps of school culture, student mentoring.
Okay, I missed that.
It's okay.
Okay, very good. I withdraw the comment.
You verified it, you made sure it wasn't there.
Is there anything, any other questions, discussion?
I just want to make a comment, going back to the restorative justice circles, I don't know enough about it, but as I understand it, I don't think it's designed to have, you know, a victim and a perpetrator in the same area. I think it's collective conscious, or consciousness of the school student body if they're unhappy with something. So if there is a lot of grumbling about parking lot, no, that's not what it is.
No, it's really not in the personal relations primarily, and relationship between students and teachers, and students and students.
Yeah, no, I, I get that relationship, but I don't think it, you know, and again, I could be wrong, I don't think it's about putting the victims in the perpetrating.
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It is.
And like I said, I, you know, I think that it would be really helpful, there's been some videos of these restorative circles, and also, we can get some information from Larry Spring, and he'll help to clarify exactly what it's about, and then we can have a further discussion.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
We can do a second topic learning next year.
Any other questions? Okay, are we ready to go?
This is Mark's comment.
Yep, go ahead.
The restorative justice, with Parkland shooting at that school, the police chief had said that the school used restorative justice, and his comment was, it was basically set up so that kids wouldn't have on their record some assaults or something like that, that wouldn't allow them to move forward, that they would always have this on their record. And he had said, he made the comment that if they didn't do that, and let this record reflect that he had these assaults on his record, that he would never have been able to get a gun. So I just urge you to look into that and see if that's true.
So, they have restorative justice circles, and because of that, it was never recorded?
I don't know about circles, he just said they use restorative justice, so that a kid doesn't have on his record something he can't get past, because once you have something on their record, then that follows you forever. So, it was a way to kind of restorative justice, to restore your justice so that you don't have this on your record. And if he had had it on his record, because he had a couple assaults that never went into the system, then he would never have been able to get a gun. I'm just asking you to look into that, listen to that, I'm sure a video's out there someplace, see if it's true, I don't even know if it's true, but, right? I'm just putting it out there to see, so you can really look into that.
And that's from Parkland?
Parkland, yeah.
Well, I think when Johnstown P-Tech first started, they did restorative justice, not necessarily the circles you described, but more what Chris is describing, where a group of students, if something came up among the student body, like somebody was wearing a Confederate flag, the restorative justice team, which was a group of students, looked at both sides of the issue and then sort of made a judgment, a decision about how it was proceeding, which is different than the circles you're describing. But I think that's more like what you're talking about, and also came in lines.
So, from a minimal perspective, it sounds like we need to define what it would be for us.
For us, and learn more about it.
Just one other thing that I would, in response to that concern, one of the threat assessment team that we're going to have... that we're going to have, I think would be addressing those things, whether or not there's a record, you know, so that it would not be under the radar. That's the whole idea of the threat assessment team, is that we would, you know, be looking for those indicators that would then be able to respond before it became, you know, an issue. So, but it's not to say we shouldn't look into that and see, but, you know, we certainly are very, very concerned with that, that we should have our ear to the ground and know what's going on. Okay, anything else? So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay. Next item on the agenda is pool wages. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, that passes. Then we have the diploma or credential options for students with disabilities to have a motion.
Second.
Can I have a motion first to waive the second reading? If everybody has.
Second reading of which?
Of the policy itself.
I would make a motion to.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, though we have. Do I have a motion to approve the policy?
You mean a motion, I seconded.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? The motion carries. Now we have consent approvals, starting with the minutes. Any comments or questions on the minutes?
We have motion.
Oh, sorry, a motion for a consent agenda on these approvals.
So you need to leave A out?
Okay, so.
All but A.
Okay, so let's do that one, oh, okay.
Oh, so we do A separately and then the rest?
Yes.
So let's do A first, minutes, any questions, comments or observations?
Do you want a motion?
Oh, do I need a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept, we need to do these individually, right? Which one are we not having? Just May seven, I make a motion to accept May seven.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, then we have the other two minutes, can we do those together?
Yes.
Okay, rattle motion for the other two minutes. Second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, that's clear. Now I'd like a motion for consent agenda on B through, what was the last? B through A.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay, okay, opposed? Okay, so we have a consent agenda, now we can go through each of the items. Budget transfer schedule, any questions or comments?
I had two. The equipment and furniture. Is that, did I read that right? We're transferring money into equipment and furniture, so are we purchasing equipment and furniture?
No, you can have the second page.
Yeah.
Yes.
What are we?
That's all Gary's budget, it's all on the first page, and so he's purchasing some money around within his costs.
Oh, so it's not that we're purchasing furniture and equipment necessarily, it's that he's moving money?
Well, we're, he, he's purchasing something, but I don't remember what he's getting with that for a moment.
And then my other question was, the basketball shooting machine?
We're going to move it forward now.
Last time I knew you practiced shooting by shooting the ball yourself. That was a lot of money, what was that?
Something I guess they wanted for years. I can't tell you what they should have done.
I gotta tell you, that, that should have been lined somewhere in a budget discussion. Almost seven thousand dollars. That, there's no way that shouldn't have been lined item somewhere. Absolutely.
Isn't that part of it? They raised money for, through the basketball.
Then why would it be, why would it be in our budget?
They didn't? No, I thought, I, that was just what I thought I heard.
Sixty five hundred, sixty five hundred and seventy five dollars. So to me, that's a real example of line item detail that we would have asked a question on that.
If you would like more detail, we can get it for you, we just didn't know that was going to be a question tonight. But what would you like to know that we can find out more about? Like what it is and why they wanted?
Yes.
Okay. We can find that out.
And the bigger issue to me, from a budget learning perspective, something like that, I think we should be able to see when we go through a budgeting process, because we would have questioned that back a year ago.
We did, did we or did we not?
We didn't have.
We didn't give you the athletic budget, though. So I would suggest that Leah, let's make a note, because we did the line item for all the other budgets. We'll just add the athletic budget then. Because if you get the same budget for athletics that we gave you for everything else, then that would have been there. Okay. Leah's going to make a note of that for next year's, but.
That's why I jumped out.
Fair.
I played basketball for a lot of years, and you practice shooting individually with a hand and a ball.
You did a lot better with a basketball machine.
Yeah, yes, but.
Okay, anything else on budget transfers? Then we have bills, any questions on those? I have a couple, I'll think of them quickly. One is on fifty five, one fifty three, Sync B slash Amazon. What's that for?
Amazon purchases.
Okay.
Sync is their bank, or whatever that bank that they use.
Sync or any bank, okay. And then fifty five, one ninety, Herkimer Central School, sixteen thousand dollars?
That is for a foster child placement that was placed in their school district, but since it's our kid, we have to pay them tuition.
And. Fed, the FM Regional, fourteen thousand dollars, that's another thirty six sixty seven.
That's through our P Tech grant, that's the charter dues that we pay to the local library and chief of the college. Let us do that.
So it's great, we need to.
C I.
Okay, any others?
I had a couple.
Go ahead.
So one thing that stood out to me that I know I need more guidance on from looking at this is the different services that we're paying for to assist students, and it, it's starting to blur. Loving guidance, I think, is the conscious discipline, right? But then, then there was Wildwood, Family Counseling, Montgomery Social Services, House of Good Shepherd. Then we had a presentation today. I think it would be really helpful to kind of, what is this pie? And what is the difference between all these pieces? That's what stood out to me, looking at all these big numbers going to all these different places.
So many of them are direct services for students with disabilities in education. There's going to be two, there's going to be two pictures. So one will be all those things that are around social emotional learning or other kinds of counseling services. Then some of the other things you mentioned are all of the educational services for students with disabilities in specialized places, so we could really do two that would help clarify what all these things are.
Thanks.
Any other questions on those?
I have one other. What is city, C I T I, O Cs for seventy, seven hundred?
That was the O Cs that we paid to do the third party review for the capital project, for the phase one, the transit.
Oh, okay, okay.
Other, it used to be known as a Swoone County O Cs way back in the day.
Anyone else?
I just had a comment. Actually, I'm not sure this is on the bills. Is, is C twenty one in the bills? I just lumped all these together. I think it is. Hill and Marks under the cafeteria stuff?
Yes.
I would just hope that we're getting a discount, because I've done business with them before, and they have discount levels, so I hope we're going after discounts with them. And if, I would really hope that we price shop, shop, because I found them to be really high.
A lot of that is the bid, because they do, they do bids for all those products.
Because I know it was, it was specifically in the kitchen, so I'm not sure how that works, but.
They do bids for all those.
That's it? Anything else? Okay, along, we have the treasurer's report. I don't have any math this morning, just want to know. Any comments, questions on the treasurer's report?
I just had one. What is G F M M? We had two transfers to it. It was in the general fund fifteen, zero, zero, three, one, oh, one, six, zero. One, one was for a million and one was for three hundred fifty thousand, and I didn't know what G F M M.
That's the money coming in, going from the general fund, money market.
Money market, that's what it stood for. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the treasurer's report? Then here are tax refund, any questions there? Okay, so non-contract for services to group management service. Any questions on that one? Anderson Center for Autism, any questions on that one? Yep?
I didn't see any rates in there.
Bingo, that was my question.
Well, this.
I probably didn't include it because it had a student's name on it, so let's see.
Student interest actually.
Yeah, I.
Facility.
So that was the appendix A, they did the pricing only by what service was being given.
Yes, and it's, well, tuition a day is three hundred and one dollars and seventeen cents. So it's fifty four thousand for a ten month program. Summer maintenance program is thirty one nine.
Those rates are usually set by the state, yeah.
Right. Yep.
Okay, so then I kind of have a related question, because Wildwood is relatively similar, right? I think it was Wildwood, one of the other contracts we have coming up. What's the difference between the programs? Is it the type of disability they're working with or?
Well, they both primarily work with students with autism. Anderson Center is a residential facility and Wildwood is not.
Okay.
So we pay the, so although it's residential, the county also puts up some of the costs for the Anderson student.
Because we only pay for the education portion?
Yeah, parts of, yeah, essentially, essentially. Whereas Wildwood, that student is not place resident, is not residential student.
Yeah, I saw that, had transportation contract.
Yes, so there's a connective.
So when it's in, when it's a live-in arrangement, then do we pay part of it that would be education related?
Essentially, and.
The living expense piece is paid by somebody else?
Yes, there's a lovely formula that they use.
Anything else on that? Okay, contract for services, cast to charities, any questions on that?
This was another one in that pie, right? It was like, okay, so which piece is this one now?
Delicious pie I have. This is, this is a person that does counseling for us, four days a week, so it's like a point eight position for us. So they see students for counseling K twelve, primarily in protective, so students with drug, alcohol, concerns, family concerns along the same lines, so it's like a targeted counseling program, but they're with students K twelve.
Okay, anything else on that one? And Wildwood, any questions there?
You missed family counseling.
Or this one? Oh, family counseling, sorry. Anything there? Yep?
The one, no, 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 you've already got the other points. On this one, the thing, the thing that was a question to me was, I noticed that they said they were responsible for clinical supervision and that we would participate in the evaluation. So it kind of left it unclear to me, who's really evaluating the performance of this service?
We do that together, essentially, so I meet with.
But if you're not happy, can you say that person's not here anymore?
Yes.
Because that isn't the way it read to me.
Gotcha, but yes.
Participating in doesn't read to me.
I can say.
Exactly.
No, I gotcha, I gotcha.
And then when they specifically said they only give clinical supervision, that was almost like, no, 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 we're, we're not going to evaluate their actual job performance.
I think what they're trying to get at is that this student, this employee is a student, everyone's a student now. We oversee. They, they were, they send us individual essentially reports to us as day to day activities and so on. So they oversee, like, any type of like healthiness the person might do, they oversee that, they, that, their notes go into their system. So that's really what they're, what they're doing. I will tell you, though, how it's actually carried out, is I have conversations all the time with their direct supervisor regarding performance, and it's been stellar. We, it's amazing.
All right. I would, just for future reference, that language is not definitive. So if you ever had somebody you really didn't like, and they wanted the person, you could be in trouble.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Well, I will ask them to state it now.
Is that something that should be addressed in terms of this contract?
That's, I think, your call, but.
I'm comfortable with the, the way that it is structured right now. But I will.
Anything else on Wildwood? Sorry.
I'm sorry, but I will talk to them about the future.
Anything else on Wildwood? Okay, Albany City School District. Any questions there? Yep?
Yes. Okay. I won't read my notes exactly. For the list of services that they have on there, this price seems to the moon. So my first question was, can't we require them to go to the doctor? We're already paying to do this stuff for us, since they live here?
If students who attend non-public or procheal schools in another district, the district that that school is located in has the opportunity to rate set and backfill the district, because those health services are being provided in that school, in that location where the students are.
That price is absurd. We should. My opinion? No, we should tell them how much we paid for those services and here's the reimbursement we'll give you.
It, it doesn't, I, I appreciate that, it does not work that way.
Anything else?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Community Youth Center request for bus transportation, any questions there? Go ahead.
Do we pay for this? Do they pay for it?
They pay.
Oh, so my other question. It didn't say, so I wasn't sure. It just said, thank you for the support.
Well, it does say the youth center pays the driver directly and pays the district the per mileage rate set. In the notes?
In the notes.
Oh, in the notes, sorry, I read the, I read the request.
Oh, yeah, no, it's in the notes.
And it doesn't mention anything about pay.
And the, the per rate will remain at a dollar ninety per mileage rate, not for mileage.
Okay. Next is the O C substitutes. Any questions there? And finally, the distributed interest and sales tax, extracurricular accounts. Any questions there? Yep?
How much is that usually?
No, that's the percentages split.
Oh, we won't know what the.
Well, no, I, I read that, but we must have a store, are we talking about five thousand? Are we talking about five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars?
Twenty.
Twenty dollars?
Twenty dollars?
Yeah, we used to, it used to be.
That's all I wanted to know is what are the, what's the magnitude of this number?
It used to be a considerable amount. Now it's like twenty dollars an interest or something. It's not very much.
Okay, so are you ready to move to hold?
You did.
Follow in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Pay? Okay, that's done. Next, we're onto new business. We've already discussed the superintendent self-evaluation, which we've asked for by August first. We have to really try to figure out what we want to get together on that, to, to a collective assessment of our evaluation. The superintendent wants to receive our self-evaluation. It could probably be in August. And we also wanted to get together probably in July, if people are available to that, to discuss prioritization of the goals. Since we've just adopted the long-range goals, what we'd like to see happen this year. So that we can give some guidance to the superintendent and the administrators to say this is what we want you to be doing this year. So we want to try to pick a date in July at least at this point, you know, for the call setting. And then we can, after July, maybe maybe we can pick one in August. So if people know their vacation plans are and so forth, and once Jen is here, so we can make sure our schedule.
I know when I'm away.
So do I.
But you're not here.
Well, it's.
For the superintendent.
I don't, I'm sorry.
Not July.
Did I hear you correctly? We were gonna wait until twelve to find out when.
No, I was thinking that we should pick a date in July for the call setting. And then we could wait for the July meeting.
Oh, all right.
Or August date for the superintendent evaluation.
I'm not here until, you know, August. I'm not here until the thirteenth.
You know, we're gonna do August and July.
She's got an August vacation too, so just.
Well, you know, we'll work all right out in July. And she'll give her, her dates, so I'll have that to share with the rest of the board. Since she will be part of the superintendent evaluation, your last act. Former board now. And so do we have any suggestions for a July date? How about the nineteenth? Would that be a good day? Thursday?
It's okay with me.
Yeah, might, might work for me. I was gonna suggest maybe the eleventh right before the call. And that goes back to back meetings, but maybe the nineteenth. I'm just not a hundred percent sure. We can set it.
Okay, is this a problem? No.
Yeah.
Because I'd really like to see everyone participate in that.
Yeah.
I'll check with, I'll check with Jen to see how.
What time do you want to do that?
What time we're going to do it? Seven? Do you want to have dinner after meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean. What, what's the format gonna be? Is this a longer meeting or what do you think?
I think it probably becomes a long, you know, for us to. And people hopefully will, you know, look at it ahead of time so that they can ask some ideas about priorities from here.
On that day, I think I can be available anytime after five.
What works?
After five.
Yeah, it should work for me too.
All right, so you want to do five then?
Five to five?
Yep, on the nineteenth. Does that work for you?
In the conference room?
Okay, thank you. And then we'll figure out the superintendent evaluation that July will. Okay? So I think we're done with that and then we are to old business, one-to-one initiative.
So our SSIP's been submitted. I was asked to do a variety of corrections. They're all done. There's no more corrections, so I am really hopeful. That means we're in the queue for approval. We have put out a doodle to the tech committee to identify who wants to come and work with us in the summer to do two things, the one-to-one rollout plan and the required nineteen to twenty-one instructional tech plan. And that was part of the original deadline as, that we had proposed or timetable we had proposed earlier. So that's where we are and I will keep you posted if we get good news from State Ed about the SSIP approval.
Any questions, comments?
Just one other, we're going to be doing a little bit of, just one other thing I just like to share. We'll provide it in July. In July, Mr. DiPaolo's going to be the administrator responsible for technology in the district with the help, part-time. But it's not bad. You, you already knew. But anyway, we have it all laid out. We're gonna announce it to the staff next week. Just give them the information. Mrs. Pamkowski's gonna be helping him out a little bit. And we've got that all organized and structured so that that responsibility will be coming in that direction. So we'll provide you with that information as well.
Thank you. Like it or not, thank you.
Well, he's, he's what, five days away, four, six days away from survival of the first year. So, yeah, if you don't wanna like dig so far.
I'm charged up.
Survive the first year, good.
Okay, is that it on initiative at this point? Okay, then we're up to the school scheduling evaluation committee.
Yes. So I put in some notes late this afternoon just for discussion purposes and so that everybody can have them. They're in the public comment section. So the framework of this, of work for this committee is established, has been established. Really, the, the committee will function from September through December. But the essential question is this, and this is really from the board. What is the optimal schedule format to meet the districts? This is the part we've added because it's, we're talking about schedule. What's the optimal one? The district's vision, mission, and Board of Education goal for curriculum. So the expectations of the committee are to come to an operational understanding of all the different kinds of scheduled formats, options of processes, and evaluate the various options against the district's vision, mission, and curric-, excuse me, vision, mission, and curriculum goal. What option or options will best meet the needs of our students to be world-ready? So we're going to solicit members of the sixth, twelfth faculty and they will be provided the opportunity to volunteer to be part of the committee. We will also have two high school students as part of the schedule evaluation committee. So that is where we are.
Any questions?
What about parents?
That's a great idea. We can ask some parents.
And what about a board member?
That's up to all of you. We welcome, we are non-exclusive at all in our committee, so we will welcome anybody.
And how big are you planning on making a committee?
It depends. I, I would say a good functioning committee is eight to ten, but typically if people are willing to volunteer their time, I have, we usually find a way to make that work.
So I would just say that if any board want to participate, we can either decide who you want, we should, we should be, or we can just.
I, I think this issue's come up enough times. I think it would be important. And if I would be willing to do that, if you were so inclined to work.
Is that feasible?
Yeah, I'd be willing as well if you, if you couldn't do it or.
Be like backup?
Yeah.
All right, so that'll be ready soon. Now they're directed. Okay, and you have anything else on the schedule committee?
I would really encourage some parental.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go, we'll find some parents. At least, well, we'll give parents the option. We'll send it out and ask.
And I'd try to pick parents that aren't related to the students that are on them so that you're getting.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Multiple family.
So I'm guessing that the implementation of whatever the vision, whatever the committee comes up with would be for the fall, not this upcoming school year, but the school year, you know, nineteen, twenty.
Correct, correct. That's why you look at the September through December timeframe. That starts to, and maybe not, depending, because again, there's a, depending upon what the forward-thinking schedule kind of structure would look like, there may be a need for a lot of professional development, a lot of support to make those changes. So yes, maybe nineteen, twenty, but maybe twenty, twenty-one depending upon what the group, what the collective group comes up with, yes. Yeah, so perhaps, I just wanna say perhaps because sometimes if you do some, if it's a major kind of forward-thinking schedule change, that may require more time.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so just so you know. It's gonna be very, a lot of learning going on.
Anything else on that? Okay, the last point for the business is the, or suggestions for a fall community dinner about the three-to-eight assessments. The thinking on this was similar to the vision that we had last fall. But this will be inviting students and parents and faculty as well to come and discuss the whole question of the three-to-eight assessments, the concerns and questions that people have about it because we have one of the higher refusal rates in the capital region. And there may be some significant consequences for that at this point. Although it's still up in the air, it's, lately I've read that they're kind of mottling on it, but, you know, we'll see.
They're mottling on what the consequence will be.
They're right. So right now, I had just put in the public content, an article that came through our NISBA news eclipse this week about what the Board of Regents have, have put out to the world, which is to divert. This isn't anything, we've said it here before, that the potential consequence would be the diversion of Title I money. And that is what's on the table right now. That we would have to divert Title I money for use to increase participation. And I would just like to remind everybody, our Title I money is all people. So we'll be thinking, just because we all like to have a backup plan, about what that might look like.
I was gonna say, one of the NISBA email things that came out had an article on this.
Yes, so that.
I don't know if it's the same one, but I, I know one of them that I got as a board member talked about this topic.
Yes, it was on eclipse, yeah.
We really never had a discussion with constituents about this whole issue. We had discussions about what, what it should look like if you refuse to, if you wanna refuse. We would never have a discussion about why are you refusing, what are your concerns? Is there anything you do to alleviate it and so forth and, you know, or to address it? And so I think it would probably, I mean, my feeling is that it would be a really, you know, good basis to have, have a meeting and kind of have a, just a sharing of ideas and sharing of ideas.
I agree.
At dinner?
Very thoughtful.
So are we agreed on that? So we'll just, over the summer, we'll pick a date and we'll prepare for it.
We might want to pick the date before assessments occur.
Assessments are always in the spring, so if we do it in the fall, we should be a good shape.
Okay. All right, so. Was there anything else on that? I will accept the motion to move into executive session. Follow in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to ask Stacy if you would mind staying as well as Jen to.
Can I, just a couple minutes? Bio break.
I saw myself on the agenda. I wasn't going anywhere.